Welcome to the September 1, 2009 City Council Meeting. May we have a roll call, please. Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Drayman and the invocation by the Reverend Charles Updike, pastor at the First Baptist Church.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Our God, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to serve our city. Bless our mayor and the council and those who meet tonight. We also come asking your help in the fires. Grateful for the sacrifice of men and women who protect us daily in service to us all, for the opportunity especially to pray for the families of two of the fallen, for Ted Hall and for Arnie Kionis. We ask, Lord, your blessing upon their families in this time of grief and upon all those who help us to weather this firestorm. We ask this in your wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. May we have your report?
Agenda for September 1, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 27, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Next is presentation and appointments and a 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of September 8, 2009.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, let me go to Assistant City Manager Bob McFall for the report. Bob?
Thank you very much, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, first on the housing authority, starting at 2:30, there will be one item. This is the Acting Director of Community Development and Housing on the Housing Choice Voucher Funding Reduction Resolution. There will be a redevelopment agency. There will be one item on the redevelopment agency meeting. This will be a report from the Director of Development Services regarding a concept of designating of a creative media and design district within the San Fernando Road corridor. The city council meeting that evening, starting at 6 o'clock, there will be two action items. First, the Director of Human Resources with a proposed ordinance of the city of Glendale providing for a salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or armed forces. This is in particular employees who are in the National Guard or armed forces and are called up for active duty. There will, secondly, be a report from the Director of Public Works. This is regarding the SR 134 San Fernando Road Access and Safety Improvement Program, the Fairmont Avenue Extension Project regarding night work.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we need to add two items to the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there is a matter of housekeeping, and that is a declaration of emergency from within, or the resolution to ratify the declaration of emergency. So if anyone has that motion, I can turn it over to the city attorney for clarification.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you is a motion to add that, the matter of the station fire to the agenda as well as a resolution to ratify the Director of Emergency Services declaration of emergency that he made on August 29. So first, we need a motion, which I provided to you, finding that the matter arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's a need to take immediate action at this meeting. And I, that, because there's only three of you here, that needs to pass by unanimous consent.
Mr. Starbird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you might wish to go ahead and take these items up in terms of adding them, and then if you would, we have Chief Scoggins here to give an update on the status of the fire and review the activities of the past few days, which we could take up at that time as well, although I don't, I do see Harold here.
Okay, why don't we start with a motion?
Your motion to add it to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Yes. All right, and now we should introduce the resolution, et cetera. Get that out of the way.
For the declaration.
I have two, I have two resolutions. Are they?
One was a motion, one was a resolution.
The one you received this evening is the correct one. We had some factual things we had to straighten out in the resolution. So it's the, here, this is the one.
Oh, this is the one.
The one that was on your dais this evening is the one you should be acting on. The substance is the same. There were some factual errors in the first one.
Okay, I'll move the resolution, ratifying the proclamation of the city of Glendale's Director of Emergency Services proclaiming existence of a local emergency.
Is that an introduction of a resolution or a motion?
No, it's just a motion. Motion.
Motion adopted.
So it requires a second. I'll make that second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Yes. I'd annex the introduction of the ordinance.
No, that's it. This is it. We have ratified it.
At this point, I'll call on Chief Scoggins to give you a brief overview of what has been a very active several days here in Glendale. And let me preface his remarks by saying that the Director of Emergency Services who made the declaration is yours truly, which occurred on Saturday, I think, I forget the time, 12:30, 1:30, something like that. Pardon me?
3:29.
3:29, how time flies.
58.
I will say that as a Director of Emergency Services, what I do is I listen very carefully to all of those people like Chief Scoggins, who were in command of Glendale's response to this incident, and generally look for ways to try and support them in the, in the work that they do. And Chief Scoggins was front and center throughout the incident, and I'll touch on when he's done, a few of the key players in addition to the many, many city staff members who were involved in, in our response to the incident. With that, to Chief Scoggins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. The last five or six days have been very busy around the community, and I'm going to talk you through things that took, have taken place since last Friday. And as I go through this, at the end of the PowerPoint, and it was just going to roll through some photos, there's a few maps. And once we get to the maps, I'll kind of explain to you what's been happening around the north end of Glendale and in La Cressenta over the last five days. Last Friday, Mr. Starbird and I, we reviewed what was going on in the neighboring communities of La Canyata with the fire and how it was advancing. And at that point, we made some decisions on some trigger points. And trigger points are basically when we put things into action here in Glendale because of what's going on and what's coming our way. And at that point, the fire was still in La Canyata. When we were reviewing the situations and what was happening, and our first trigger point was at the top of Ocean View, which is Earl Canyon Motorway. And basically, that's approximately one mile outside of the Glendale city limits. That first trigger point was a voluntary evacuation notice, and we would move forward with activating the EOC. On Saturday, all these things came to pass approximately at 1:58 in the afternoon, is when we put the call out to activate the EOC. The fire was moving in a very rapid manner towards the north end of Glendale. So we activated the EOC at that point and got things moving. There's a lot of thank yous to be had, and I hope I can remember everyone here who deserved them. But basically, we put Captain Ron Gully front and center in the EOC to organize the staff down there. He's been a very valuable asset to this community for many, many years, and once again, he has done that. So we brought in Public Works, we brought in the Police Department, planning, finance, water and power, parks, libraries, community development and housing, and all the different divisions in the city to start putting some plans in play. Because once you activate an EOC and you set up mandatory evacuations, there's a few things that need to take place. You have to give the citizens a place to go, and you have to be prepared for that. So we bought the Red Cross in. That's a picture of Mount Lucans and what was taking place up at Mount Lucans. And so the Red Cross came in and set up the shelters. We also activated our personnel in the Glendale Fire Department and started moving resources to the north end of town, which is where our biggest threat was at that point in time. And it's important to note that because this started off as a very small fire at the Ranger Station up Angeles Crest Highway, hence the name, the station fire. That was the geographical point where the fire started, and that's why this fire is known as the station fire. The fire blew up on Friday and Saturday and started moving east and west at the same time. Very important to note that because we had no wind, and this fire was still growing at a rapid manner. If you may remember, a few weeks ago, when we had the freeway fire, similar conditions, very hot days, single-digit humidities, and no wind. The difference was, there were no other fires burning in the area, and it didn't grow as fast, and we got air shifts on it immediately and really started unloading on that fire to knock the head out of it. This one, we thought the same thing would happen because in the Southern California area, there weren't very many fires burning, so we thought this would happen. So when this fire took off, it was a real surprise to us. So we moved five engines to the north end of Glendale because the incident management team that was out at Hanson Dam, and they're still there, put the call out for resources throughout the state. And they ordered what's now approximately 3,600 firefighters who are on the line fighting this fire. But Saturday afternoon, there were not very many resources on this fire. We called our neighbors from Verdugo Dispatch, and we got five additional engines to go up into, at the end of Briggs, at the end of Ocean View, and then to start focusing on the Glendale interests at the north end of town. Because this is before all of the help was coming, basically the cavalry was coming. So on Saturday night, the firefighters were really engaged throughout the night in a real significant firefight at the end of Briggs Terrace and at the end of Ocean View. And that's where we watched what was taking place. As we moved forward into the incident, we had to start preparing because we knew this fire was moving in multiple directions. It actually took off to the northwest towards Santa Clarita area, and it took off to the northeast towards Acton, which is what you heard a lot on the news. And just to give you an idea on how fast this, this has been growing, I mean, today is Tuesday at, at 6:00 PM, and the fire right now has been reported to be 127,000 acres right now. On Friday, this fire was less than 2,000 acres. So that's how fast this fire was growing. But the significance in the numbers is yesterday it was 121,000, so in the last 24 hours, it's only grown 6,000 acres, which is a big deal because the progression is starting to slow down. That means resources are getting on the line and starting to stop the fire. We joined the incident in unified command at Hanson Dam because Glendale had interests at stake. Anytime a community has interests at stake and values at risk, the Mass Mutual Aid System says, "We will join in unified command" because we needed to have a voice at the table when decisions were being made to get resources our way. Battalion Chief Greg Godfrey went to the incident at that point, and he unified with the command team to make sure that our values and our interests and our needs were being met, and we started getting those needs to be met. If you can put up the map, I can go over, over the map to show the progression of the fire and chart it as an hour. Okay. So Chief Godfrey went to the incident command post, representing Glendale. We had many resources coming into town. What this map is showing you here is the purple area is the, is the mandatory evacuation area that we went into in the last couple of days. The yellow area is the voluntary evacuation area. I'd like to thank the community because the community has been great in complying with the evacuation orders. And I know sometimes it seems a bit confusing when we initially started off in a mandatory evacuation mode and went into a voluntary evacuation mode, but that was all based on the rate of spread of the fire. As the fire came across that face in the north end of the community, we needed to switch back into a mandatory evacuation mode because the fire started backing down from the top of the San Gabriel Mountain Range. Mount Lucans was affected. Our repeaters up there for our radio systems, the electrical to that system was burned, and it went on battery power for almost 36 hours. Just this morning, our radio shop was able to get up there and plug in a generator to the system, and now it's on generator power for the next hour. It does two things. It's going to run on generator power, and it's going to recharge the batteries, so we should be good for at least another two or three days. And by then, hopefully, we can get a team up there to start repairing what's taking place up there. The last couple of, the last couple of nights, you've seen a lot of fire activity in the mountain, and that's been a combination of things. And I'd like to take the opportunity to explain that. You've heard a lot about backfiring or firing out or different things like that. That is a tactical decision to help battle the fire. The goal in that is to create a defensible space around the homes, so when the body of the fire gets to the homes, we already have a large fire break in between the homes. Now, the fact was, this fire was coming down into the homes. That's what the facts were. The goal was to create a defensible space. The fire was growing so large, we were not getting the resources that we need because of the other values at risk around the fire. For example, Mount Wilson, a real significant value to the LA area. A lot of resources, air resources were thrown at Mount Wilson. The feeder lines that come from northern to southern California, major values at risk. So we made a tactical decision. We had all the right people in place. We had all the resources in place, and it worked very well. And here in the community, we haven't lost a home, we haven't lost the structure. We pointed out what the significant values were, all the way down to the, to the oak tree back in Duke Magian Park, and we got the crews in there cutting line around the oak tree, and the oak tree's doing fine, the barn's fine, the ranger house is fine, all the homes, the ashram, religious retreat up in the hills, everything came out okay. Everything did well. Right now, we're watching the last piece of the fire that's in Glendale, that's in the Sky Ridge area. Down in the drainage, there is a lot of growth. And the Mill Fire, if you remember approximately 35 years ago or so, was the last time this area burned, and the growth in some areas was, was pretty incredible, especially down in the drainages. As we move forward the rest of the evening, I'm going to go up with my team up there, and we're going to do an evaluation of the areas in the north. And tonight sometime, we hope to make a change in the evacuation orders here in the community to try to get the residents back into their homes. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, just some additional comments. It's always dangerous to try and begin to identify people to give special recognition to, especially in an event of this magnitude where we have virtually hundreds of people on the front line, the first responders, our fire staff, our rescue ambulance staff, our police staff are out there, in this case, beginning before mid-Saturday of this weekend, literally going 24 hours until this point and continuing to go on. But there are also virtually hundreds of people that are behind the scenes, supporting them, as Chief Scoggins mentioned, things like communications and mapping and food and electrical services, and paying attention to all of those things that can go wrong during this event and making sure that all the support services are there to support the people who are on the front line, to provide for care and support for our own staff as well as care and support for our residents, which is probably our highest priority throughout this exercise. But I do need to and want to single out a few people. Chief Scoggins in particular, who I know right now is feeling terribly sleep deprived because he has spent a lot of time here, nice and day, as he has helped to manage this event and frankly, keep all of us surprised at what's going on. Captain Leaf Nicolason, who had the enviable task of filling in as chief during this entire event, while he was also juggling plans for the Michael Jackson funeral, as well as juggling other events that occurred during the last three days. He and his staff have done a tremendous job. Greg Godfrey, who I think you refer to him as the incident commander for Glendale?
Yes, in unified command.
Yeah, he is, has been absolutely outstanding. Invariably, where Chief Scoggins and I would go, Greg would be there in his full turnout gear in 110-degree heat, working constantly. I don't know when the man slept in the last three and a half or four days. I doubt that he's had much of that, but he has just been tremendous. Ron Gully, who the chief mentioned, who headed up the EOC. In this action, we had really two operations in, behind the scenes going on. There's the Emergency Operations Center, which virtually every department is represented, and staff are pulled out of their everyday jobs and taken out of their private lives, and they staff the EOC 24 hours a day during the entire duration, working their shifts on Saturday, on Sunday, and today, in our likelihood tomorrow, for a portion of that time. Our allied agencies like the school district, the Red Cross, who have people there and have just done a tremendous job. Oh, that's right, the Gears, I have to say, I'm going to leave somebody out, the Gears, the amateur radio operators who have been there the entire time, usually more than one of them there. I know they really enjoy this, it gives them a time to exercise, but they are indispensable. All of those things become very concentrated. It's been a relatively short period of time, but at 24 hours a day, with the level of energy that takes place, it's, can be very wearing on those people, but I will tell you, your staff has performed very admirably. The saying goes, "If you can't be good, you want to be lucky." In our case, we're both. We were very fortunate that we didn't have winds when this fire occurred, or we would have had a disaster, I think, occurring, especially in the county and possibly in Glendale. But we're also very good, frankly. We exercise these operations. We've had the misfortune here in Glendale, every few years, we have to do this, whether it's train incidences, or floods, or fires. And we take this very seriously. We exercise it, we work it. Every department participates so that when these kinds of events come together, when the machinery is put into action, we know what to do and people go about doing their jobs. And in all modesty, Mr. Mayor, I think they do it very well.
I agree, Mr. Starbird. I'm going to read a few facts on the different members of the city staff and some of the hours that they worked. And I want the public to understand that, I mean, the city has to continue to provide electric power and so many other essential services. So this is above and beyond the normal working hours of the employees. And the Public Works Department, there were 58 hours expended. Police, 1,866 hours. Human Resources, these were all people that were staffing or responsible to the EOC. Command staff, 34 hours for HR. Planning, 104 hours, they were providing maps and other services. Glendale Water and Power, 20 people, over 100 hours. Community Development Staff, 438 hours. Parks Department at the Civic Auditorium and other locations, 105 hours. The GTV6 and the Management Service, 140 hours. Our computer people, the information services, not just for computers, but also for the radios, et cetera, 440 hours. So altogether, approximately 3,500 hours, not counting the Fire Department, worked on this incident, and in many cases, are continuing to, to work. The Emergency Information Center handled over 1,800 telephone calls, and it was staffed continually from the activation on 8/29, and it's still operational. The website was updated regularly, and, let's see. And then, other people or other agencies, the Red Cross, the Gears, radio volunteers, Glendale Unified School District rep, they were all members of the EOC team. And then finally, the city also has to be appreciative and the residents to the support of the community. Private companies and small businesses, which basically donated food and water for the people, the first responders, the EOC staff, et cetera. So there were just private companies, small and large, that just went out and decided to volunteer clothes, or rather, food, drinks, et cetera. Then for me personally, I tried to stay out of the way. There was no need to, to get in the way of all of the first responders, but I did take the opportunity on three different occasions, twice at night and once during the day, to, to go up to 210 to get off in Pennsylvania, just to get some feel for the, how ferocious this fire was, and it certainly was. It certainly was. So all I can tell people who live in, in hillside neighborhoods and even the Verdugo Woodlands and other neighborhoods, you need to clean your yards, you need to clean your hillsides, you need to trim your trees. I mean, this is the season. There's no, from here until November, December, you better take a good look at your homes and take a look at the trees that are near your, your house, garage, et cetera, and begin the cleanup because in many cases, that's the only hope for you. And I do want to thank you, Chief, and all the firefighters and everyone else that responded. I think they did a tremendous, tremendous job. It's not over yet, but I think we're certainly headed in the right direction in this narrow front line of the Glendale portion of La Cressena. Mr. Najarian?
Just a couple of questions. Chief, were there any residential structures destroyed in Glendale?
None.
I think that goes, goes a lot towards the capability of our department. And you're wearing a black band on your badge. What's that all about?
I am. As, as our firefighters continue to fight this fire along with the, all the firefighters in the land, we mourn the loss of the two firefighters that have lost their lives on this fire. Fire Captain Ted Hall with the Los Angeles County Fire Department, a 28-year veteran, and firefighter Arnie Kionis, firefighter specialist. And what is so critical to note about their passing is where they passed was their worksite. When the news reports are that they drove off of an 800-foot cliff, that's where they went to work at. That's how bad the conditions were in that area, and they could not, they could not see where they were going. So we mourn right now, and we will mourn with their families and with our brothers and sisters in the Los Angeles County Fire Department, and we wear this band until those firefighters are laid to rest.
Chief, there was a time I paid a quick visit to the EOC. It was Saturday, I think, around, around 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. I know one of my young sons was very concerned about Glendale's capability, although we were several miles from the fire, he was very concerned about what we were doing and whether we were able to fight the fires. And at one point, you laid a map out. This is when the fire was just starting to get some legs, and I think you pointed to a location on the map. I think it was, I think the Briggs Terrace area. And you said that, and not to disparage any other agency, but you said that there were very few resources from agencies outside the city of Glendale protecting a certain area. Yet our engines were ready to go, ready to hold that front on the, to protect the homes and welfare and lives of the city of Glendale. So I know that, that our department did a great job, but I know that had things gotten worse, I think, I don't think that you were tested to our full capability. I know that weather was cooperating. But if things got hotter, I, and I know, you know as well, that our guys would have stepped it up and been able to meet the task. And that's what makes me so very proud about our Fire Department. And if anyone, and putting the politics aside, and we, Fire Department has come under, I think, excessive scrutiny in the last six to nine months. But when someone says, our leaders, and when I say that we need to devote all the resources that we need to, that the Fire Department asks for, we shouldn't question those requests. I think this is one of the prime examples, where we've got the manpower, we've got the tools, the radio equipment, the pumps, the engines, the proper turnouts, the gear, and maybe we won't have another fire like this and be tested for many, many years. But it's times like this when I am glad that we've got a department under your leadership, and hopefully, you are not lacking for anything, manpower, equipment, or support from the community.
Yeah, and on that note, on that first Saturday night is when the incident was building up and the resources were not here, but once again, Verdugo Dispatch, being able to call in resources from 12 agencies. And what I did that evening was I sent a call out to our area fire chiefs, and they all kicked in resources and said, "Hey, whatever you need." So not only did we have our resources in the north end of town, we also called in our neighbors until basically the cavalry got there to make sure we had the support that we needed. That's critical to note. Without Verdugo Dispatch, we would not have been able to do that.
And Chief, what kind of communication system were we operating between the different agencies at that? we operating between the different agencies at that time?
On the ISIS network.
The ISIS. And this is what we've talked about. Some people who don't realize, what's ISIS? What are you guys talking about? What are you going to Washington and trying to get funding for?
Yes.
This is a prime example of the advantages of ISIS, being able to speak to other departments.
Yes.
So I applaud the foresight of City Manager's Office and all our ISIS Committee for pushing to develop this system. And here's an example where I'm sure lives were saved. You were able to communicate to others to discuss the advancing of the fire and all that. So I probably said enough. So, thank you.
Actually, the grandfather of ISIS, Captain Ray Edie, is in the back of the hall there. And we will be adjourning the city council meeting in honor of the two fallen firefighters, by the way.
Much appreciated.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Drayman.
Chief, I won't, I won't take up much more time. A lot of what, a lot of the thoughts that have been going through my mind over the weekend have already been expressed up here. I just want to say thank you. Obviously, this is an area of the city near and dear to my heart. Glendale as a city altogether is, but that's my, that's my neighborhood, that's my hometown, that's where I grew up. And the Mills Fire in '75, that's exactly correct, 34 years ago, 1975. That's how I first got on the merry-go-round of public advocacy, was finding temporary shelter for homeowners, many of them friends and neighbors who lost their homes in that fire, or were put out of their homes in the fire, and then replanting of the hillside. So it was a bittersweet moment to watch the tactical burns going on, because many of the, much of the growth, those, was the work of volunteers such as myself to replant the hills at that time. And I also want to mention the concern as we turn to the fall and the winter, winds and rain, and flooding, and sandbagging, and replanting, and the process goes on over. But I guess that's a discussion for another time. But I want to thank you, Chief, very much. It was, for the people in the far north part of the city, a very emotional and wrenching time, aside from the loss of, the potential loss of property, it's just the, just the recollections that that brought back of that 1975 fire. We are, we have very, a great deal to be thankful for in this city. And in terms of the resources that you and the rest of our city staff brought to bear, we are very thankful.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just close. I just want to leave you with how proud I am of the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department and of the city, and how much time and effort that they have put in over the last four or five days into making sure that this community is well taken care of. And I got to tell you that I'm really proud to be a part of this team and its family, because everyone has gone the extra yard. Thank you.
And I should have mentioned that Congressman Schiff also called and asked if we did need any, what we did need or didn't need, and I told him, well, I don't think we really need anything at this point.
Oh, we'll get back to him. There's lots of things we need now.
In the back of my mind, in the back of my mind, I was thinking, we'll need some money down the line.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, some green will help us green up those hillsides.
And I actually also got a call from our sister, from the mayor of our sister city in Korea. I guess some of the residents of La Cressena had contacted relatives back in Korea, but he also called to inquire how the situation was. Thank you for everything, Chief, and your fellow firefighters. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
Next item, the city council and staff comments.
Any city council comments? Okay, I do want to, Mr. Drayman.
It's on a light note, Mr. Mayor, perhaps we can use turning to a lighter note. In August, a Glendale resident, Glendale residents, Tom and Robert Russell, who are the owners of Ocean View Contemporary Bistro and Anderson's Pet Shop, took their very rare vehicle, 1926 collapsible Lincoln limo. There were only two made. Yes, these, this was the Dietrich version, and this vehicle had belonged to Jack Warner. And as I say, it was one of only two that were made, two of the Dietrich models. And there's a photograph of it right there. And they were invited to the most exclusive of car shows around, and that's the true and real concourse elegance up in Pebble Beach. And that's their vehicle there, completely restored. And they took third place, which is an amazing feat, especially for a first-time, first-time out. So I wanted to extend our congratulations to them and our encouragement, and know that Glendale was in the race, literally. So it's a beautiful car, beautiful, beautiful vehicle. It doesn't photograph exactly with the true colors here. It is burgundy, actually, and it looks black there, but it's actually burgundy. And beautiful vehicle, and congratulations to the Russells.
Mr. Mayor, I have to ask, do you know what collapsible refers to?
It refers to the, if they put the photograph back up for a moment. The limo driver compartment is covered by a top. It's a separate compartment. It's covered by a top, and the top collapses back.
Okay.
And almost, when it's done, it almost appears to be a touring car when the top is folded all the way back.
If you have to ask, you obviously are not a limo person, Mr. Drayman.
I'm not a limo person, that's for sure.
Okay, I would like to adjourn the meeting this evening, actually, starting with adjourned in honor of a longtime city employee, Charles Ed Dinwiddie. He was a senior equipment mechanic with the Public Works Mechanical Maintenance Division, and he passed away after a long battle with cancer. He was a Vietnam vet. He served in '67 to '69. Just a wonderful person, talented mechanic. And he started, worked his way through the ranks, from maintenance garage worker to the equipment maintenance helper, and then mechanic too, and he finished his career as a senior equipment mechanic. He survived by his wife of 32 years, Martha, and their two sons and one daughter. Excellent person, always had a great smile on his face. And then, we'll also adjourn the meeting in memory of the two firefighters that were mentioned earlier. One was LA County Fire Captain Ted Hall, and he survived by his widow Catherine and two sons and his parents. He joined the Fire Department in '81 and worked in several stations, down in Lakewood, Whittier, La Puente, and La Canada, Flint Ridge. He was promoted captain in 2001. The other firefighter was Specialist Arnie Quinones, and he survived by his wife, La Ressa, and they were expecting their first child in a few weeks. Also survived by his mother, Sonia. He joined the department in '98 and served in Palmdale, Covina, and the La Canada Station. Together, they had more than 34 years of firefighting experience, and they were supervisors of Camp 16, where they trained inmates and others in wilderness protection. And the loss of these brave men will be felt deeply by their family, friends, fellow firefighters, and all residents and citizens of California. Okay, next, please.
Next is the consent items. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request for a motion as proposed.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, if you, unless you have any cards, I will move the consent calendar.
Second. Oral call.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next would be oral communications.
Right, we'll have announcements. I have one card, Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the library and the friends at the library to tell you about our September program. Now, before I talk about the program, the book that is going to be shown September 10th, I'll talk about the future programs, and I'll talk more about the Millennial Makeover. Now, on September 17th, we will have local author and traveler Colin Ledgerton, who will talk about invisible, invincible, invisible China. And this will be a prelude to the One Book One Glendale program, which will go on during October. We'll talk more about Colin next, next time I'm here. And then, September 29th, we're having a book by an attorney, author, called Children of the Genocide, and we'll give you more details about that later on this month. Now, Millennial Makeover is a book by Michael Hayes. He'll be the one who appear at the library Thursday, September 10th at 7:00. Now, the title, MySpace, YouTube, and the Future of American Politics, that's biting off quite a bit. And Mr. Hayes, for 25 years, has been a research person for hundreds of television stations and cable channels all across the country, and even in some foreign countries. He's appeared and done research for these, for programs, almost in all the 50 states of our country. And what he will talk about is the fact that he's located a segment of our community called, which he calls the Millennials. The Millennials are those who were born between 1982 and 2003. And he will tell you how they now form one-third of the population of the United States. And he will tell you, in his opinion, how these people will be the big actors, so to speak, in the next 40 years of American politics. So that's quite a subject matter, quite of interest to everybody. We hope the schools will be there, the college will be there. We hope some of you, the councilmen, have the time to come to that. And anybody else in the community who wants to see what's really going to be happening in this country the next 40 years from a political standpoint, you can't miss this. He's already got national acclaim for this book, and we're pleased that he's going to be here. And the other two programs I'll tell you about next time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I do have another card. Paula Devine and Elizabeth Manassarion.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, city council, staff, everyone at home. I'm here to announce that the Commission on the Status of Women, in keeping with our focus this year of women's health issues, we will be partnering with Glendale Adventist Medical Center to deliver a community program about stroke prevention and treatment. September is Healthy Aging Month. We're all doing that as we stand here. And Dr. Lansley, the director of the Advanced Primary Stroke Center, will be giving the lecture. What we want the community to know is, we are very, very lucky here in Glendale, because we have an advanced primary stroke center, and there are only two of those in Southern California. The other is at UCLA. So we're very fortunate. And there is 24/7 at Glendale Adventist, an emergency stroke team available, on call. And Commissioner Manassarion is here, thanks to that emergency team. And she will be telling her story at this luncheon on September 17th, on how her life was saved because of that emergency team. Stroke has no age boundaries. A small child can have a stroke, a teenager can. You don't have to be 60 or older. Anyone can be a victim of a brain attack. We will, the radiology department at Glendale Adventist has stepped up to the plate, and they are going to donate three cerebral, you're going to have to help me. Cerebral vascular profile exams at the luncheon, and the follow-up as well. And they are all going to be free, so that you can have a, an exam done to make sure that none of your, that all of your arteries and veins are in great shape, and you are not at risk for a stroke. There will also be door prizes and a free gift bag and lunch. It is free. We encourage the community to come and learn about this great facility that we are so lucky to have in Glendale. It is September 17th, that's a week from Thursday, I believe. Registration is at 11:30, and the program will be from 12 until 1. To make a reservation, and we do encourage reservations, because we do, we expect and hope for a big crowd, to please call 818-409-8100. Again, 818-409-8100. It's lunch, free gifts, chance for a great exam, and
And a story to share.
And a story to share.
Let's call it a healthy lunch.
Yeah, healthy, exactly. And I'm sure the chef will be doing that as well, because he does try to accommodate that healthy. Oh, and I want to also add that anyone, runners and walkers, who take part in the Glendale Dash, the downtown dash, this is a perfect opportunity to come to Glendale Adventist Medical Center and see where your donations are going, because they all go to the stroke, primary stroke center.
Mr. Drayman.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that, as my colleagues know, in 2007, a little more than a month after I was elected to office, my mother suffered a stroke. Had the good fortune to find herself eventually at Glendale Adventist. Dr. Lee was her doctor, and she, although, although she had other issues at her advanced age, the stroke was something with their immediate intervention and also their rehab program, which is also just second to none. It is an amazing program. She regained her ability to eat, walk, breathe, a near complete recovery from, from stroke, even at advanced age. So I am indebted to them, obviously, as is my family. I'm very happy to hear you doing this, and, and I've seen Dr. Lee's program, and it is wonderful. So I encourage people to go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, I neglected to mention at the beginning of the meeting that we would like to take Item 8B off calendar. That's the Director of Public Works regarding SR 134, San Fernando Access and Safety Improvement Program, Fairmont Avenue Extension Project, specification number 3303 Night Work. We'll bring that back at a later time.
Okay, so noted. Next, please.
Moving to action items, at 8A is city attorney regarding provisions to the Glendale Municipal Code pertaining to Title II boards and commissions, including terms of office and membership. At 8A1 is the ordinance for introduction. At 82 is a motion removing all members of all Title II boards and commissions, except the members of the design review boards effective upon their reappointment or replacement.
Okay, Mr. Starbird, Mr. RC.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is brought to you, back to you after the August 18th meeting. Direction was given to staff to prepare an ordinance to provide that all Title II commission, boards and commissioners will serve for your terms, and that their terms would run co-terminus with the council member, the term of the council member that nominates them to the board. The other thing that the ordinance does is reduces the membership of the Commission on the Status of Women and the Arts and Culture Commission from seven members to five members. And then, the third thing is, not the ordinance, but the motion pursuant to your direction from August 18th, was to remove all the members of those Title II boards and commissions, except for the design review board. The removal will be subject, would be subject to the reappointment or replacement of the commissioners by the council members. The, I think what was, what was directed was to, the ordinances would take effect October 8th, and then the council members would have until 30 days after that to make their nominations to either reappoint or replace those board and commission members. So those are the items before you. One, we're asking for an introduction of an ordinance. And then, two, if the council so And then, two, if the council so desires at this time to make, to make the motion at 8A2.
Mr. Drayman.
Question, just a clarification, Mr. Garcia. It is, in addition to the Arts and Culture Commission, it's also the Commission on the Status of Women.
Yes.
Two, that changes in number.
Correct. And then, also, I would add that with respect to the terms of the boards and commission members that you may reappoint, starting in October, the remainder terms will be a first term, and any of those commissioners will be entitled up to two additional terms, subject to actual nomination and appointment by the council. That's, and that's just, that mirrors identically what happened with the Design Review Boards.
Mr. Najarian.
Okay, a couple of questions. This does not apply to the Civil Service Commission, because it's a title
That's a charter-created commission, so the terms are governed by the city charter. That's correct. If you want, I can list, the names are in the report, I can go through them of all the commissions.
No, I see the ones that are there, but that one just, just came to mind. And then, by this action, we're essentially wiping the slate clean.
Correct.
Correct. And then, we'll have 30 days?
After October 8th, because that's, October 8th is the date that the ordinance that you're introducing tonight will take effect.
And
So the
So, so the, let's say, the people that are interested currently, I guess, at Design Review Board, as an example, the, they still have to go through the application process with the clerk's office, correct?
Correct. That whole, the recruitment and selection process still follows the procedure that we have for nominating and appointing commissioners and board members.
And then, for some commissions that aren't as popular as others, I won't say which ones, because I think they're all very popular, but, but for some, let's say, they're not as popular, and we don't hear directly from those who wish to be appointed, will we then receive a list of applicants for the position? Or can we request that, then, that? I'm worried that some of these commissions may, as we wipe out the current commissioners, may go unfilled, due to either our ignorance as to who's interested, or, let's say, perhaps a lack of interest in general to apply for that. So how, what's the best way to deal with that?
Well, two things, and, Artie, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city clerk's office will prepare a list of all the people who have applied for the different boards and commissions. And then, two, nobody will actually be, actually removed off the commission until the entire commission's membership has been reappointed.
Okay, so a delay.
Right, right.
Let's say I've got several qualified candidates, but I just can't choose which one. During my weeks, let's say, I'm indecision, the current commissioner holding that seat will remain.
Correct.
Okay, so there won't be a vacancy.
The intent here is not to have any delay or any period where the commissions don't have, won't be meeting on their regular meeting day because of lack of membership.
And the, let's say, a councilman leaves office before the end of his term, how do we deal with that, then? Does that commissioner, is he entitled to remain at his term, or, or as it is now, it's currently at the discretion of the new, whoever would be the new councilperson coming in?
One, the way that the ordinances were now and would be worded after is that that person serves until they're replaced. So if, for example, a councilmember stops serving his or her existing term, and that person, a new councilmember is either appointed by the council or elected at a special or regular election, then at that point, the new councilmember could nominate someone to replace that existing board member or commissioner, to, to fill the remainder of the term.
And I have a question. And if a, if someone is appointed to a commission by a particular councilmember, and that person, at the end of a year, year and a half, leaves the commission, then does the councilmember appoint someone else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nominate someone else in the full council round of five.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to offer to introduce the ordinance when you're ready, or if we're ready.
Ready, any other questions? Ready, Mr. Drayman.
All right, then, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
All right, the ordinance has been introduced. Is that all we need tonight?
Do we need 8A2 as well, or?
You can make that motion tonight, or the ordinance won't take effect until October 8th. You can wait till the council meeting after that to make the decision at that point as well. Again, if 8A2 is adopted tonight, all the existing board members and commissions will stay on the commissions until they're replaced or reappointed.
Well, let me ask Mayor, and, we're a thin council tonight, but what the
Well, thank you. Try to lose some weight. You know, you know.
What the consensus is.
I could take care of it tonight.
All right. Then, fine. Then I will, you need a motion there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then I will move Item 8A2.
Second. Thank you. No other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, maybe a procedural question that we discussed at staff meeting, and we may need to get clarification on the existing commissioners who are interested in being considered. Do they need to submit an application, or will, or?
They will be contacted, Mr. City Manager, mayors, and council. Everyone will be contacted, obviously, to let them know of the decision taken this evening, and they'll be asked at that time whether they wish to keep their application hot, if you will.
Which is what we did with the Design Review Boards when we did that process.
Just want to make sure that's okay with the council.
And some have already indicated, anticipating this decision, that they would.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next, we'll return to oral communications. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the matter may be referred to the appropriate department for an investigation report by the city manager.
Okay, we'll start with Tyler Jamison, followed by Michael Arbuckle.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmen, staff. I live in Shoal Canyon, and as you know, East Glen Oaks travels through that canyon. And at the end of the canyon, there's a sharp left-hand turn, and the road winds uphill to the baseball diamonds and the municipal golf course. Now, that whole area is just a tinderbox, ready to go up. In fact, it's only been very shortly that we had a fire at the mouth of that canyon, which was put out very quickly and expertly by the Glendale firefighters. My suggestion, and it's a suggestion only, and I want to say that it may have no value at all, but my concern is, is that many of these Southern California fires are started by arsonists. And during the fire season, end of August through the fall, it might be a good idea to close the gates and lock them on that road that goes up the hill during very slack periods. In other words, people should obviously have access to the golf course, to the Diamonds on Saturday, or when they planned certain practice, you know, baseball practice or something like that. But I hate to think of some unconscionable scoundrel using the slack time to go up and start fire on that hills, on those hillsides. And he may have access through other streets and other ways, but that is such an obvious access to an area that would be so easily lit up with fire. And you have some very fine experts that can consider that. It's essentially a no-cost thing, it's locked every night anyhow, it would just be a matter of locking it earlier, or choosing not to unlock it at all on certain mornings. But, in other words, deny access to someone who means us harm. Something simply to be considered. But during these times, it's, you know, these things come to mind very quickly.
Mr. Jamison, we respond at the end of oral communication. If you like, you can concede, and when we're through with, we can talk about your end. Michael Arbuckle, followed by Carol Brouche.
Hello, I'm Michael Arbuckle, again, as spokesperson for the Ivy Glen Tenants Association. Again, we thank you for your concern and for your help in the meetings we had with Ability First, and we'd like to report on how we feel it's gone since that meeting, and what Ability First continues to do. We feel they continue to use harassment, they continue to use practices that are contrary to HUD laws, and also to California tenant laws, and they continue to harass the tenants and to make up different, well, different things that, that just are just plain harassment. They're invasive, when we've actually confronted them with actual laws, we give them actual pieces of paper. That's why we haven't come to you like every week. We did not come every week because we wanted to show that we really wanted to work with them. The issue is no longer whether or not we get back the manager we used to have. We dropped that issue from that meeting. We, we recognize their right to choose who they want as a manager. In fact, they chose two managers, not one, two brothers, who have zero management, zero management ability or background, no qualifications whatsoever. But we, again, didn't come to you, and we wanted to work with them and see how they would do. They did put a supervisor or manager from another building over them to train them, but all they have done is, when we brought up actual laws, actual things from HUD, from the California Tenants Association, from the ADA, how come you're not complying with these? They're invasive, they have this mantra they now do whenever we come across, in their minds and in their spin, as just a few people who are sour grapes, a few people who are keeping this going and not cooperating. Their mantra is now, "We don't have to, I don't agree with the law, and we don't need to talk about that, and this meeting's not about that, the meeting's adjourned." So this is how they're responsive to us. And all we want is to know that our rights will not be overlooked, that the tenants will have their rights respected by Ability First. Again, we have actually called HUD, we have actually called the City of Glendale Housing. We actually say, "Is this an ordinance? That's a real ordinance." We are not trying to get back at them, we are not sour grapes. We are actually only wanting the actual laws to be implemented and to be used. And, again, they say, "We don't have to, we don't agree with the law." Since that meeting, when they said that they would do repairs and they would take care of the termites, they have not taken care of the termites. Termites continue to eat the building. All they have done instead is concentrate on, "We need to take back all of your, all the rights that we gave you under the old management, all the things that were given you under the, the idea of accommodations that are reasonable, we now take back because it's a new management." We take them all back. And instead of working with the tenants, they just impose their will without actually working with them at all. I only have five minutes, I'm going to close and really come to the gist of it. We, we know that they have violated the water, for instance, 10 times since you implemented it. 10 times they have violated, they just violated yesterday. They were watering yesterday with the hoes, even though the law, your ordinance says they shouldn't. And we don't bring that up, again, to be vindictive. We bring it up to say, "Well, this shows intent. If they think they're above the law just in city ordinances, how much more they think they're above the law involving HUD rules are California tenant rules that govern actual tenant management problems?" So all we're asking really is, at least follow through with the promises you made us here, that, that not only would you give us that meeting where you would sit in on it, but that you would also send some, maybe someone to actually interview individual tenants and get their viewpoint. Also, where they violate actual municipal ordinance, please don't let them get by with it. Show them that they're not above the law. Also, we know that you may have done all that your jurisdiction or legal consideration allows you to do, but in your political and business careers, you've made friends with and you've come across people who have those jurisdictions, both in state and federal government. Please help us by giving us numbers where we can go help ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Carol Brouche.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. My name is Carol Brouche, and I am here on behalf of all the residents of Glendale and those who live beyond the borders, who use the AT&amp;T White Pages to call city offices. I had a letter printed in Friday's news press about the issue I'm about to bring up. I don't know if anyone read it, that's why I came here tonight. In the past years, under the listing for city government offices on Page Four of the White Pages, every department in Glendale has been listed, and I counted, it's around 42. The 2009 edition of the AT&amp;T White Pages lists only six. Missing are the libraries, Glendale Water and Power, city attorney, city clerk, council officers, neighborhood services, and that's just to name a few. I called the city clerk's office and to ask about this, and I was told to go online for the missing numbers. But not everybody has computers or internet access, and there is a person I know that every one of the council members knows, who does not have a computer. And that's just one person. So then, the person in the city clerk's office said, "AT&amp;T decides what goes in." I don't believe that's true, because Burbank, in the new White Pages, has all the listings. I do not believe this is a simple error of oversight, I believe that someone arrived at this brilliant idea to cut back. I don't know if it was cost-cutting or a way to discourage the public from calling, but to not be able to access government phone numbers from the phone book is, to me, an inexcusable impediment to public access to government. So I came here tonight to request that this matter be investigated and steps be implemented to assure it doesn't happen again. And I believe that in the next utility bill, a supplement should be put out, which lists the numbers. Now, I have here copies of the 2009, I have here copies of the 2008 to be passed around, so you will see what is going on. And I, I know that you don't answer now, so I'll just sit back and hope you will address this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Starbird and Mr. McFaul. On the first issue, the speaker had some suggestions at particular entrance to Shoal Canyon.
Well, let me say, I think the, the concern is a good one, and one that we should give some thought to. The implications of trying to close a gate and open the gate during the, I'll call it the, more active and less active periods may be somewhat problematic. But it does, it does raise a good question, which is, in these areas where we have considerable open space and access via the public roads, whether there's something we can do that will tend to inhibit the possibility of somebody getting up in those areas and causing mischief is something that we will give some thought to. There may be more effective ways of dealing with that, for example, closed circuit cameras that could be very visible and very apparent, without having to have staff open and close gates, and yet defer people from getting up there and causing mischief. I think of other areas in the city where we have significant exposure to open space, where there's a stretch of road and very few residents with eyes and ears to watch what's going on. So we'll give that some thought. It's a, it's a very interesting problem that we probably should give some thought to.
Isn't there a gate that's closed? There is, right? Yeah.
There are. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members, it's considered a park, but you've got a ball field and a golf course, so those run longer hours than a normal park, which is usually sunup, sundown kind of thing. So with the night driving range and the early tee times, that gate's left open longer than most areas would be.
Okay. No, it's absolutely worth investigating. And then, have we arrived at a decision legally? And then have we arrived at a decision legally in terms of our participation in the project?
In Ivy Glen, you mean? We are, staff is continuing to work on that issue. I was rather surprised last week, before we got busy with the fire, I just had an update on that from Jess Duran, and his report was, he thought things were on the right track, moving in a good direction. No sooner did I get that report than literally that day, you and I both received an email from another resident expressing the same concern, so I had asked Jess to redouble our efforts and let's go circle back around again and see what we're hearing from some and maybe something different from others. I had thought residents were going to be interviewed, and if that hasn't occurred, then we probably need to do that. Frankly, I'm about to the point of thinking we should have some kind of a confidential survey of residents to get everybody's perspective in a way that they can feel comfortable speaking about that, so we can really find out what's going on there. Staff continues to work with both the residents as well as the managers to try and resolve these issues, and we will continue.
Well, what I'm still not clear on, and I'm not sure that we received any communications, but I'm still not clear what the City of Glendale's relationship is.
Oh, we did send that out. We have, we have a development agreement with them, as well as HUD has a funding and an operational agreement with them, so we definitely have a stake in this facility. The apartments, I believe, are separate from the, from the restored home, but there is both a development agreement with the housing authority and our CED, Community Development Housing Department, as well as HUD committed funds of that, and there is a management and operating agreement there. So, so we are stakeholders in this.
And the management company was chosen by the City of Glendale?
Well, they are actually owners of the facility. They own the apartment complex, and it's the agreement with the, with the restored house that, that brings us into the picture, and the funding brings HUD in the picture for underwriting the, the apartments.
Okay. Okay, and then finally, to the issue of the White Pages, one thing I will do for sure is talk to the governmental, governmental affairs manager for this area and ask that person why it is that they shorten the, the number of phone numbers, because you're absolutely right, boy, did it shrink. Well, I don't know, no, we didn't do anything at our end to encourage AT&amp;T, is that correct, Mr. Starbird?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we don't know. I, I did read the lady's letter to the editor, but then again, we got into the, these fires that's been pretty busy. It's a good question, we may very well have filled out a form. In the past, we've generally been contacted by AT&amp;T to check on numbers, to see if things have changed. I frankly don't know where that comes out of, it, it might likely be in our public information office, it probably should be. If we weren't contacted, then accept going to them and asking them why the lesser numbers. It's nothing that, that I'm aware of that we do, we certainly have no reason not to want all of our departments listed there, we list them on our website, we list them every place else, we, we have publications, we'd certainly want them there as well.
But I do agree with the Speaker, I mean, for people that don't have a computer or don't use a computer, I mean, this is just simple things like the recycling number, refuse collection, bulky item pickup.
No, I completely agree.
Bread and butter things that, and it's interesting that Burbank, you know, Burbank's well-covered, but not --
Well, we'll, we will run it to ground.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Mr. Najarian.
On that item, I just think it's, it's a slap in the face of the fine city of Glendale to have only two inches of phone numbers. You'd think that we're the size of Calabasas or La Cañada or Agoura Hills, but I do want to say that the city puts out the city views, is that bi-monthly or?
Bi-monthly.
Or quarterly? I think perhaps quarterly, where we certainly do put forth, and that's where I clip it, the extensive list of all the departments that even I, you know, if you were to ask me at home, "How do I get in touch with?" Oh, community development and housing, let's say. In fact, I oftentimes give the default number of the city manager's office, and I'm in a little hot water for that today, as a matter of fact, but, but the city does try to put that out, and I, I will trust the mayor and the manager's office to, to rectify the situation for next year.
We'll run it to ground.
And I will be curious, I'll ask the manager, I'll be curious who made the decision or how they go about making it, because it is kind of interesting that they continue to publish all of Burbank's numbers. Mr. Drayman?
On that last. Your microphone. Counselor. Thank you. On that last, I did see your letter, and thank you for bringing the issue up. It's, it would seem at first like a small issue, but it's not. And I'm also curious how we're presented, I mean, that would happen to be the AT&amp;T directory. What about the other, the other directory?
The other directory?
Yes, the, the other directory, literally and figuratively, as to whether or not the same thing happened. But the other question the Speaker raised was about a supplement in the, I guess, in the utility bill, and that's something we might think about, because even with city views, and Mr. Najarian and I do the same thing, I clip it out of there, but again, not everybody necessarily thinks to look at that. Wouldn't be a bad idea. Wouldn't be a bad idea, I mean, even if this hadn't happened, it wouldn't be a bad idea to do that, so, anyway, can we look at that, see what the potential costs are of doing that?
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
There's no new business, is there a motion to adjourn in memory of firefighters Ted Hall and Artie Canonas and the city employee Edwin Dinwiddie?
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.